Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular scheduled meeting for December 28th, 2020. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. I want to entertain a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Fabulous, I'll move.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Okay, any discussion? Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call for the approval of tonight's agenda, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
And Councilmember Schlitter.
Aye.
And Mayor Hague.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. We now move on to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from this agenda and considered normal sequence. We only have two items tonight on our consent agenda. Our city council minutes for December 14th, 2020, and have respersment approvals through December 28th, 2020. Anybody have any questions or concerns regarding tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved, Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Thank you, Councilmember Fabulous. Any final discussion? Hearing none, Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do the roll call, vote for the approval of tonight's consent agenda.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schlitter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Hague.
Aye. Thank you. We now move on to our public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing a name and address. I believe you said we didn't have anybody tonight, Administrator Krugel?
That is correct. We have two people in attendance. If anybody in attendance would like to participate in public comment, please raise your hand. We'll give it a few seconds here to see when. So we have two people in attendance right now. I don't believe we have anybody for public comment. Mayor Hague.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on the closed public comment.
It's Krogman.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman.
Schlitter, second.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlitter. Administrator Krugel, if you'd be kind enough to do a roll call vote to close public comment.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas.
Aye. Question though, because he didn't ask whether we had any questions.
Oh.
Did you have a question then? Public comment, Councilmember Fabulous?
How come we don't have a vote to open public comment, vote to close?
Um, well, I can answer that technically. Technically speaking, the mayor can open and close it. I think generally speaking, our, the way that we've conducted the meetings, we, the mayor opens it and the group closes it. So there's no right or wrong way to do it. It's just kind of what the norms have been for the group.
Yeah, that's the way I've understood it from the beginning too, that when we open public comment, we do that by announcing public comment and it takes the entire body to go ahead and close public comment. That answer your question, Councilmember Fabulous?
I already knew my question to answer. I didn't know that anybody else knew what that was.
Okay. Okay, so you want to do that vote, that roll call vote then, Administrator Krugel?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Favelas.
Aye.
Councilmember Huntington.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby.
Aye.
Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Schlitter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
And Mayor Hague.
Aye. So we have one item on the agenda tonight for our regular agenda, that's six alpha, our council member appreciation memo. Administrator Krugel.
Yes, sir. Mayor Hague, members of city council, this is an agenda item that we, you know, is bittersweet, but we do have some outgoing council members and mayor. This is their last meeting and we just want to express appreciation for their public service. Allow any of the council members to wish them farewell publicly. And yeah, really thank the individuals because they do deserve our thanks and appreciation for all the time that they've put in, you know, over their term or terms for the city of La Sure. So that's the intent of this and I'll leave it up to anybody else. We don't have to take any action. It's just, you know, showing some appreciation for Greg Hague, mayor from 2017 to 2020, Johnny Favelas, who was council member from 2017 to 2020, Mark Huntington, I believe I have the dates right. We look back in the minutes, but if not, you know, correct me, but from 2005 to 2008, and then from 15 to 20 as council member. So really, I'll leave it up to you guys to take it from here and yeah, express appreciation for those outgoing members.
Thank you, Administrator Krugel. I'd like to start off by following up on what I said at the last meeting in regards to Councilmember Huntington. Luckily, he's here tonight, which is a great thing because that means that you're feeling much better, Councilmember Huntington. We're all very grateful for that. So again, thank you for all your hard work over these last four years, for me in particular, and for this council. I can't speak anytime before then because I wasn't associated with you back then, but it's been an absolute pleasure and I thank you for everything that you did for the city of La Sure and everything that you did specifically for this city council. Thank you. In regards to Councilmember Fabulous, I don't even know where to begin. When we started this adventure back after the election of 2016, we had some pretty glaring situations that we had to deal with. And you were extremely instrumental in making sure that one of our biggest problems that we had at that time, the quote unquote stink problem within the city of La Sure, was properly addressed by taking the chairperson role over at our Minnesota River Valley Utility Commission. You also saw, along with help from Councilmember Huntington and Councilmember Sullivan, the overall dissolving of that Murph Puck with the city of Henderson. And ultimately now it's a standalone entity within the city of La Sure. I personally believe that, I don't think that could have been done without the incredible amount of yeoman's hours that you put in towards the sufferer. You took this project on and though you had help from your fellow council members that were assigned to Murph Puck as the chair, it pretty much rested on your shoulders. And not only did we have to deal with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency situation, but then again, you also had to deal with an awful lot of stuff in regards to what the condition of our plant was and what the current condition is today, now that it's part of La Sure's entity. And then we can't forget the fact that you brought forth all those years of your expertise and knowledge in regards to fitness facilities. And that came in extremely important here with the city of La Sure, our community center. You had specifically identified some areas that could have been improved four years ago. And you planted the seeds for our council to kind of go ahead and follow your lead in regards to what you thought we could be doing, not only to make the facility Americans with Disabilities Act capable, but also by initiating a lot of the efforts that was necessary and helping us come up with the necessary software and most importantly, the right people to make sure that we could go ahead and gain the metrics to determine what that community center actually costs for the city of La Sure. And I believe now we have that information and with your, and those very, those two important areas, not only Murph Puck, but also RPAC, not to mention other things like Charter Commission and so many other things that you did, Councilmember Fabulous. It's been an absolute pleasure to work alongside of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would have anything that they would like to say before we go ahead and close?
This is Noel, may I speak?
Okay.
Councilmember Krog.
Thank you. Let me echo the mayor's comments about our two outgoing council members, Mark and Johnny. It's a pleasure to work with people who work. And we, I think as a team, have served very well the citizens of our community. I want to talk about the mayor very briefly. Greg has led us well. He's respected our roles as council members. He has spent an extraordinary amount of time in his leadership role. I am just so grateful for your work, Mayor Hague, and that you have done for this city and carrying us forward. So I wish you Godspeed as you take on other things in your life, but want you to know that I deeply appreciate your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman. I appreciate that.
I'd like to say something too. I would regret.
Go ahead.
Mayor. As an outgoing council member, been on it for a long time. I've worked with so many people and I just wanted to say that this team we had now is very, very helpful. And I appreciate all your thoughts too when I was off during my medical leave. And I just admire working with each one of you, both on committees and also as a council. And great, I appreciate your leadership as mayor you have for the last four years and working with all of you guys. It's been a great time. I really appreciate. I've expressed that I will still continue, I'm going to still try to continue on the HRA board as a citizen and maybe a few other boards I've been asked to be a part of. And I'll be talking to Sean about that later on. So I deeply also want to thank the citizens of La Sure who elected me in this position. And I really appreciate the years I did it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington.
Mayor Hague, and Member Sullivan.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sullivan.
I'd just like to go ahead and echo what you said about both Mark and Johnny. And I echo exactly what Councilmember Krogman said about you as the mayor. I think you've been a great leader. You know, you were part of the reason why I'm where I'm at here now. You're the one that encouraged me to come onto the council here a couple of years ago. And I couldn't have done it without you guys and Johnny and Mark, you were both great leaders. You know, I worked close with you guys on Murph Puck and I like where we've come. And I think we've served the citizens of La Sure gratefully with getting the plant moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, this is. I'll be brief. Greg, Johnny, Mark, it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll end this, if you don't mind, Mayor Hague, by just saying.
Go ahead, please. Councilmember Kirby.
Yeah, Johnny Favelas, it's been a pleasure getting to know you. I didn't know you that well before, two years ago, but I've really appreciated your commitment and your passion of the council and of this community. And like I said, it's been really good getting to know you a little better. So I'm going to miss you and I'm going to miss your input. Mark, I've gotten to know you pretty well too and found out we had some things in common. And I just want to tell you, I appreciate all the wisdom you brought, some of the history you brought with you to the council and your calm approach to a lot of the things we do. So thank you for all that. Mayor Hague, I'll finish with you. It's been a pleasure. It really has been a pleasure working with you. And I knew you way before we got on the council. We've done a lot of things together. We've worked together for a long time. We've had a few challenges and differences, but you've been good to work with and you've been a good mentor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kirby.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Favelas.
Well, first, you and I had a conversation 2016. And in that conversation, I said that I don't work for you. I work for the citizens and that we are all one seventh of a vote in this endeavor. At the time, I hadn't had an opportunity to see your leadership skills. And I'll tell you right now that if you would have run again, you would have had my vote. I absolutely positively enjoyed working with you, your friend, and you're a heck of a good mayor. You don't, you don't push the fact that you are the mayor. You push that we should all be as engaged in every aspect of what it is that we do. And that's not easy to find in people. Mark, you were one of the people that approached me in 2016 and asked me if I wouldn't run. Kevin Wilkie was the other. And ultimately, it was having you guys believing that I could do something that was real on this council. You know, Marv, you've been my right hand. I'll tell you what, working with you has been fantastic. You know, Kevin was really big with me on council and he was a big supporter. And then having you come in after was just seamless and, you know, thank you for the hot balls. Yeah, you know, it's nice to work with people that work. It's nice to be around people that aren't in it for an agenda. They're in it. The only agenda is to do it right. No matter whether or not we're popular for doing what other people don't think should be done, but we know what's right for the city because we're so deeply involved. It's very easy for people who aren't deeply involved to have opinions. And I value a person's opinion, but it's very difficult when they don't know everything that is going on. And that's part of what our job is. Scott, I, you know, I've known you for a number of years now. And I appreciate how much you put into the details. You're a detailed person and you're articulate. And I greatly appreciate that. You're a good member for the team. And Sean, I'm glad that I got to know you and being on city council. And I wish I had the opportunity to work with you as the mayor. And that might still happen, who knows? You've got a good team. You've got good people and they're going to support you and work with you and help you. And they want to do that. So, you know, congratulations, seriously and from my heart. Noel, I've known you for a while too. I liked working with you at Rotary. I've found you to be somebody that I can call and talk to on a regular basis about some of the ins and outs that I think that you have the most, the most compassion and understanding for. You do a great job staying calm and listening and helping through some of the details as things arise. So it's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. I'm going to try to do what I can to still be involved. And my name's still going in the ring. So thank you. Thank all of you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, Councilmember Favelas. Well, we're at that point right now where this is a non-action item and it's been very nice to listen to all the wonderful comments. And I'd like to again, not only thank our outgoing members, but I also want to make sure that I pass on my thanks to Councilmember Schlitter, Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember Krogman, and Mayor-elect Kirby. And I wish you guys nothing but the best. It's been one of the highlights of my life to go ahead and serve as mayor of La Sure. If things would be a little bit different in my personal situation, I would have loved to continue in this capacity. But right now, I've got to take the time to deal with myself. I know that you guys are going to be in great hands with Mayor-elect Kirby. Please go ahead and do everything that you can to support him as you did with me. And let's hope that also our two new council members will be joining at the next meeting next week are willing to go ahead and put in the long hours and the effort that you guys have. As you guys all know, there's been a lot to learn. There's a steep learning curve here. And I would be remiss without thanking also council members Wilkie, Roloff, and Johnson, who were with us in the earlier days. But we wouldn't be where we are without those three individuals as well. Especially Councilmember Johnson for all the hours he put on with Councilmember Krogman and myself on the Personnel Budget Committee back in the early days. And we had to struggle with going through and trying to figure out how we go about hiring a city administrator. If you guys recall, that was the first thing we had to deal with. And Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Krogman's expertise helped immensely in that capacity. Getting La Sure, I think probably the best city administrator we could have ever gotten. And I know that the city of La Sure is going to be good for many years to come with Administrator Krugel's leadership and the team that he's put together. I think he's been termed as the dream team with him and I would have to agree with that 100%. You've put together a hell of a workforce and I think that La Sure citizens should be extremely grateful. I think the mark of whether or not we made a difference is basically to kind of look around and remember where we came from and where we are today. As we drive through our city and we see the different things that have been accomplished and the improvements that have happened, that was a collective effort that took this entire city council and our staff working in unison to make these things happen. And though we had some difficult things to deal with, I don't think any of us are happy that we ever have to think about addressing increasing people's property taxes or increasing their rates for their utilities. Sometimes city council has to make the difficult decisions. And we have to think about the big picture. We can't be thinking about just a few of the individuals, but what's best for the 4,058 to make up our city. So with that, we're going to go on in now to our miscellaneous and comments. But before I do that, I'd like to go ahead and ceremoniously and virtually pass the gavel to Mayor-elect Kirby to go ahead and bring us through the comments and reports about him, some appreciation. And thank you so much, everybody, for all the hard work you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Mayor-elect Kirby, the ball is yours, sir.
That's awful nice of you. You're kind of putting me on the spot, but we'll do that. We'll go into the end of the comments, the reports of appreciation. Thank you, Mayor Hague. And I'd probably like to start, I'm going to end with you, Mayor Hague. And we'll start with our vice president, Noel Krogman. Yeah, I don't have much to report. MMPA, our electric provider, just a quick note, since we last met, even though we had already set our rates for next year, MMPA is holding the rates the same for 2021 as this year. So that's good news. That's all I have to report. Thank you, Councilman Krogman. Councilman Marvin Sullivan, please.
Nothing to report tonight, just thanks again, everybody, and best of luck to Mark and Johnny and Greg. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And current council member, Mark Huntington, I'll say that for the last time.
Thank you, Mayor-elect. I've got nothing, there is nothing coming up. And I'm just deeply thankful to work with all you guys. And I didn't mention also the city staff that I've worked with too. They've done a great job of keeping me informed of what's going on as well and then go use fine. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. I'm going to miss you, man. You take care.
Yep, keep in touch.
Councilmember Favelas, please.
She muted?
Well, there we go. Let's try this again. I don't have anything to report. It just, you know, it was nice seeing the snow crews out, doing what the snow crews are supposed to be doing. It's nice to be able to clean up on the curbs and not have 10 feet out of snow. They're doing a good job with that. I, again, you know, I'm going to say along with Huntington, Councilmember Huntington, you know, staff is, staff is bringing up everything with us. We're at the 10,000 foot level or 50,000 foot level and they have to handle 1,000 foot level. And they do a great job of sifting the information and getting the information to us at a level and the manner that we can understand without the massive amount of details that they have to deal with. And they provide for us when we need it. You know, in 2016, one of the topics that was there was housing. And I think we've got a good handle on moving forward with housing. It was the roads. It was a CEP, CIP that we had. It was smell issues. It was, it was the mall, our streets. You know, in four years, this team has done everything. We've worked at everything and then a lot more that the public wanted from us. And we've got great plans. We just, we just need to follow the plans that we've got and stay as transparent as humanly possible. And understand that you have a staff and that staff is there to feed you the bullets that you need. They're very good at it. Trust in your team. You know, that being said, I drop the mic.
Thank you, Councilmember Favelas. Thank you very much for everything. Councilmember Schlitter, please. Anything?
I have nothing to report. Everyone have a safe and happy new year. And again, thank you, Mark, Johnny, and Greg.
Thank you. And as Councilmember Kirby, I want to reiterate again, Councilmember Huntington and Favelas, thank you for everything you've done. So thank you very much. And before we get to Mayor Hague, we'll end with Administrator Krugel, if you would. Do you have anything to add?
I just have two things. We have our organizational meeting on January 4th at 6:30 where we go through the things we annually do, board and commission appointments, newspaper depositories, things of that nature. We'll do that on the 4th and then we have a meeting on the 11th and then on the 25th. I just have two things. We have our organizational meeting on January 4th at 6:30, where we go through the things we annually do, board and commission appointments, newspaper depositories, things of that nature. We'll do that on the 4th, and then we have a meeting on the 11th and then on the 25th. So I look forward to the new year and, and working with the new council, and I want to thank the outgoing council members and mayor for, for all the work that we've done together, and it's truly appreciated, and we, we wouldn't be able to accomplish what we did over the last four years without everybody working as a team. So I appreciate that, and I'm sure we'll, we'll be in touch. And if you or anybody that's outgoing needs anything, please, please just reach out.
Thank you, Administrator Krugel. I appreciate everything, and I'm going to depend pretty hard on your help in the future. Mayor Hague, the platform is all yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor-elect Kirby. I'd just like to say thank you to the citizens that entrusted me with the vote to go ahead and hold this position of mayor, and I hope I didn't disappoint too badly. And when I say I, I mean the entire team. There's no I and T. We all did this together collectively. Thank you again to the entire city council, both past and present, and thank you to our city staff, Administrator Krugel and his wonderful directors and supervisors and managers and worker bees that make La Sure the place that we're all proud to call home. And to Mayor-elect Kirby, I wish you nothing but the best. Congratulations on winning the election, and if there's anything I can do to support you in any which way I'm here, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we will now entertain any motions for adjournment. We'll take those if anybody wants to do so.
So move. So move. Favalis will say, go move.
Well, let, we'll let the two outgoing councilmen take that. So thank you for making the motion, Councilmember Huntington, and second it, Councilmember Favalis. And I think I'll take an all-in favor, if we may. All-in favor, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Gentlemen, thank you. I'm looking forward to working with everybody next week with the new year, and our outgoing council members, I will be in touch with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you.